Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Pierce County Council. Today is February 25, 2025. The time is 3:00 p.m. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Yonbe.
Here.
Councilmember Kruever.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Morrell.
Here.
Councilmember Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Here.
You have seven members present.
With seven members, we do have a quorum. That brings us to Section 3, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag led by Councilmember Yonbe, followed by a moment of silence dedicated to our men and women serving overseas in the military, and then our land acknowledgement. Please rise if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of its co-sailors tribes. Co-sailors people have lived on and stewed these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step toward true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land.
Thank you, Councilmember Yonbe. We are now at Section 4, which is our agenda. Is there any objection to our agenda as presented? Seeing none, we'll consider the agenda approved. There will be multiple opportunities this afternoon to provide comments. One of those opportunities is our consent agenda. You may provide comment only on final action items. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda for introduction and scheduling. And on today's consent agenda, there is one set of minutes for approval, three appointment resolutions, one grant approval, a motion to rescind a final hearing date, and a motion to remove a proclamation on next week's council agenda. During Sections 8 and 9 of our agenda, we will take public comment on each individual ordinance and resolution. And finally, under community forum, there'll be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that was not up for final action this afternoon. And for information or more details, please see the first page of this agenda at the bottom. We now have the consent agenda before us. Does any member have a wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Vice Chair Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended, moving items C to C to Section 8.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the consent agenda by removing items C to C to Section 8 and adopt the remaining consent agenda. Any other changes? Seeing none, we will do public comment on the amended consent agenda. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to provide public comment on the consent agenda as amended? Seeing none, we'll go online.
Yes, Madam Chair. For any members of the public who wish to provide comments on any final action items, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Madam Chair.
Seeing no other hands raised, we will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring this back for the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Morrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever.
Aye.
Councilmember Ayala.
Aye.
Councilmember Yonbe.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. For the members of the Birth to 25 Advisory Board, we will be doing the proclamation and then coming back to the resolution that appoints you. That's what just happened, and they are all online. So just wanted them to know what was happening. That brings us to Section 6, which is messages from the executive, which there are none, and then Section 7, which is proclamations, recognitions, awards, and presentations. And today, the council is excited to proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in Pierce County. And I'd like to invite the following recipients to come to the podium as Councilmember Ayala reads the proclamation into the record. So I'd like to invite Sharon Chambers Gordon, the founder and CEO of Raising Girls, Cecily Crosskey.
Cecily.
Cecily. We just practiced this. Founder and Director of Hearts on Fire, along with several of your board members, and the Gig Harbor Women's Co-op. And for those of you that came for support, you're welcome to surround them. We just have a limited amount of time to have everybody speak, so we ask a few speakers, and then the rest are here to be part of that. And so we're going to read it into the record, and then we're going to invite you to share your thoughts. Councilmember Ayala?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, everyone, for attending today. A proclamation of the Pierce County Council and Executive proclaiming March 2025 Women's History Month in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas throughout history, women have played a vital role in shaping the culture, economy, and governance of the United States, leaving a legacy of leadership, resilience, and innovation. And whereas the contributions of women in Washington State and Pierce County have advanced education, civil rights, public service, healthcare, business, and countless other fields, enriching the lives of generations to come. And whereas women educators and mentors across Pierce County have dedicated themselves to inspiring and empowering young minds, ensuring that knowledge and opportunity are passed on to future generations. And whereas, for the first time in history, Pierce County Council is composed of majority women making a significant milestone in local governance and reflecting the growing leadership and representation of women in public service. And whereas, the achievements of women entrepreneurs, scientists, artists, and activists in our region demonstrate the transformative power of leadership and collaboration, strengthening our communities. And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, women in healthcare, education, and essential industries bore extraordinary burdens, ensuring the well-being of communities while balancing unprecedented challenges in their personal and professional lives. And whereas Equal Pay Day 2025 is on March 25 and marks the current state of the gender pay gap for women, 83% of four full-time year-round workers and 75% for all workers, including part-time and seasonal work. And whereas, despite years of progress in women's rights and representation of women on corporate boards, executive, and managerial positions, and employment in public traded companies, recognizing Women's History Month and Equal Pay Day has become increasingly important in recent years as global events and public policy in the U.S. and around the world have impacted a women's access to healthcare, job opportunities, and education. And whereas, according to a 2023 report from the Journal of Global Health, a peer-reviewed, open-access journal that publishes research on global health issues, there has been a decrease in female employment to population ratios, and share of female youth not engaged in education, employment, or training has increased since the state of COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Women's History Month 2025 celebrates the theme "Moving Forward Together", women educating and inspiring generations to recognize the collective efforts of women in shaping a more just and equitable society, now therefore be it proclaimed on this 25th day of February 2025 by the Pierce County Council and Executive, that March 2025 is hereby designated Women's History Month in Pierce County, Washington. And we encourage all community members to honor the invaluable contributions of women everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Chambers Gordon. I am the founder and CEO of Raising Girls, and we are delighted to be here to receive this recognition and to accept the proclamation, knowing how important women are to the work, not only in our community but also the world. Just a little bit about Raising Girls. We are the only nonprofit organization in Western Washington focusing on hygiene and sanitary products distributed to students throughout 15 school districts and four counties. We currently serve 202 schools, where we are delivering care bags of full-size hygiene products to girls and boys, supporting them for their daily needs. So we are delighted to be here. Thank you for this invitation and recognition, and we're here to continue to support our community every step of the way, and happy, happy Women's History Month to all of us.
Hello and good afternoon. I'm Cecily Crosskey, founder of Girls' Hearts on Fire. And beside me today, I have two of our board members, Crystal Monteros and Lacey Barker, who have joined me, and a couple of my favorite gentlemen, my father, husband, and son. And we just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of history today in Pierce County, and that's just amazing. So we appreciate the honor of being able to be invited into this space. I'm honored to stand before you today on behalf of Girls' Hearts on Fire to accept this proclamation declaring March as Women's History Month. This recognition is more than just a declaration. It is a call to honor the resilience, achievements, and limitless potential of girls and women in our community. At Girls' Hearts on Fire, we are committed to igniting confidence, leadership, and purpose in young women, ensuring that they see themselves as history makers of today and trailblazers of tomorrow. We know that when girls are empowered, entire communities thrive. So thank you for recognizing this. This month, as we celebrate the contributions of women past and present, let us commit to shaping a future where every girl has the opportunity, support, and encouragement to make her mark on this world. Thank you to Pierce County for the proclamation, for recognizing the importance of this month, and for standing with us in creating a world where every girl can rise, shine, and set the world ablaze in her own greatness. Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I did not introduce my team, who came with me, leadership team members Jasmine Jefferson, Sharon Winesbury, Cherie Warner, Cornelius Winesbury. Do you hear Winesbury? Do you know they're connected to that young man over there? And thank you to Alex Swelly for inviting us today. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting our women's group to speak here today. My name is Kim Anderson. I am the Executive Vice President for the Gig Harbor Women's Co-op. And with me today, I have our founder, Gillian O'Block. We have Alicia Grubbs, who is our community officer, and we have Rochelle Hyphell, who runs events for us. I've raised my children. I'm a 20-year resident in Pierce County. This topic is very important to me, as I'm now raising my grandchild here. So thank you, councilmembers, for recognizing the women, and we're very, very happy to be here to support the proclamation in March. We are a community service nonprofit organization. We obtained our 501(c)(3) just last year. Our mission is to empower and unite communities of women through the exchange of skills, services, and time. As women, we are conditioned from a very young age to be everything to everyone, super-moms, supportive partners, productive workers, great homemakers, et cetera. We're literally expected to be a master at juggling it all. In a world of curated perfection on social media and the isolating effects that we've been dealing with in recent years, it's easy to feel like we're all falling short as women. These glossy images we see of having it all can really make us forget that the real connections are not found in perfection but are in our human authenticity. And the reality is, is that we really need each other. Nobody can do it all by themselves. Our co-op was born out of a deep desire to break the effects of this isolation by fostering a strong sense of community empowerment and mutual aid among women. We envisioned a safe place where all women can come together and contribute to the well-being of our community through our collaborative efforts. Where it feels like everything in the world is now classed and monetized, we seek to strengthen our social capital by building trust and relationships through our personal interactions and without paying for services. This vision led us to the development of our community time bank, where we have amassed more than 9,000 hours in service to our community. And time banking hours are earned by providing service to others, and then they're spent as desire to help meet the individual needs of the person. We're currently 1,200 women strong and rapidly growing, primarily by word of mouth. In our first seven months of organizing, we sponsored over 600 activities, events, and tasks, and in 2025, we're trending to more than double that. We provide direct help to individuals with just about any life task that you can think of. We're also delighted to support Pierce County by volunteering at a number of county events and helping our community at large with various public projects. On a personal note, before joining this co-op, I could count on one hand how many women and people I could count on and call truly close friends. And like a lot of women, I was limited in who I could call for help when I needed a hand around the house or a ride to the airport. Fast forward a year later, I've lost count of how many close friends I have and how many people I can count on, and that is really a beautiful thing. Our holistic approach of combining social outlets with meeting the needs of the community is resonating with our neighbors and definitely filling a gap. So many of our members have told us this group has profoundly impacted their mental health and well-being by providing peace of mind, knowing they have others that they can lean on. These very real, personal connections are strengthening the fabric of our community. We're free to join, inclusive of all women. Our members represent a wide variety of skills, economic backgrounds, neurodiversity. We do not permit marketing politics nor religious preferences to infiltrate our organization. This provides for an accepting environment where any woman can feel safe in giving and/or asking for help. Strong communities thrive on these connections, and that's exactly what we're seeking to build here at Gig Harbor Women's Co-op, one woman at a time. So thank you for having us, and you can learn more about us on our website, gigharborwc.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I'm going to invite my colleagues to see if they have any comments, and then we're going to try and organize a photo, and they have a plan. So, Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank all of you who came. Sharon, who I've known for quite some time and have seen this nonprofit grow and blossom. And Cecily, I've got to look up your group. It sounds amazing. Thank you so much for your leadership. And then Kim and your group, I just have followed the journey of this group on Facebook and was so impressed by the ingenuity and the need. And Kim, you expressed it so well, but this morning, as I was getting ready, I was thinking of the Barbie movie and the speech by America, is it Ferrero, Ferrera? I can never say it. And I was like, can't we play that? I guess the answer was no, because no one answered me. But as a number of you mentioned, I mean, it can be a real challenge to be a woman, just like the actress described. And I know that we've all lived it, we continue to live it every day, and women throughout history have faced so many challenges, and we continue to face new challenges every day. But we're learning, and I think we have learned in the past, but we're constantly, I think, learning that we are stronger together and that we can lift each other up, and that's what I see in all three of your groups. And that's one thing in particular that I love about the Women's Co-op, because I cannot tell you how many times at home, I'm like, oh, time to mow the lawn, that's me. Time to clean the house and cook dinner and do taxes and unplug the toilet, oh, that's me too. We do. And meanwhile, and work, and you know, pick up the kids, and all of the things that we do. And I love that you all are supporting each other, and with the co-op that you're finding a way to help women learn to accept help, because we are, I don't know, I should speak for myself, I am really bad at that, and I admire that you're teaching us that we can live healthier lives and happier lives and more productive lives if, again, we're working together and lifting each other up. And the co-op is doing it, but so is Girls' Hearts on Fire and Raising Girls, and you're raising a whole generation of girls to be stronger together. So thank you for your work and for helping all of us women. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Vice Chair Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming today. Women's History Month is American history. So we have talked about this before in other things, but you know, over half or about half of the employees of Pierce County are women here. We have a majority of women here on the council. That could have never have happened without some brave women who came way before all of us, who had the courage to stand up for women's rights. One of them was Susan B. Anthony. She's more than just a person on a silver dollar. She fought, she was a social reformist for women's rights that eventually led to women finally voting. And that wasn't that long, it was 100 years ago, and we've moved a lot from it. Bravery continues on with someone like Amelia Earhart, flying a plane around the world in the 1930s. You know, these are heroes of women. And locally, someone like Janet McLeod, who fought for tribal rights here in Pierce County against all odds, against the state of Washington and other big things. So, and then on a personal account, women in the military, someone who I served with, Specialist Haro, who took shrapnel in the face in Iraq, fighting the enemy, you know. And then someone like Lori Pastewa, who gave the ultimate sacrifice in Al-Naziriyah, Iraq, who lost her life. With women's rights, with women being more in the workforce comes with more responsibility and more problems in some aspects. But we all have to support each other with these things, you know. I saw that with, I often think of Specialist Haro and how combat affects her today, how it might be different than a male or anything like that, and we need to be cognizant of that. But today, we talk about, we've got to remember the heroes of our past, because we wouldn't have groups like you today without some of the people who were brave in the past, and maybe one of you and people like you are being brave today for someone who's not even born yet for some issue down the road. So thank you for being here today, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the comments. Councilmember Yonbe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everybody, for coming out and helping celebrate this incredible, important month, as my colleague, Councilmember Herrera, was thinking. And I was trying to remember all the different other names, like Ida B. Wells and some other people. I was trying to think of just now, and I couldn't think of all of them, but it's just because that there have been, throughout our history of humanity, women who have helped inspire and support communities and build bridges and just, and it's hard trying to be all things to all people. It's not fair, but that role is taken by many women, and just to thank you for, I mean, it's kind of thanking my aunties and grandmothers and mothers and my fellow colleagues, who, that's not your job, but you've taken it on, and you do it every day. And I think that it's a reminder that with those pay statistics, that we have more work to do to make sure that it's more equitable and fair. And, but yeah, just to thank you for opening the doors of opportunity, not just to girls coming up, but the rest of us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say how inspired I am because of you and everything that you have said here and all the work that you have done in your past. And I think the framing of you are someone's hero to someone who's not born yet, that is, really just compounds the incredible amount of work, effort, energy, emotional labor that goes into not just your daily life, but what you do for community. So a big thank you to you, and I'll be referring to this recording whenever I'm feeling down because you all really encapsulated the power of what it means to be in community of women. Appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments. I will close with my gratitude for joining us this afternoon to help us celebrate all the amazing programs that we have, and we had a plethora of programs when I was thinking about who to invite. So we had to kind of think and really focusing on programs that are new to our community, growing our community, and really with youth and community building in mind is what we were looking for. So like, you are the epitome of that, and you are doing such amazing work. So just really want to acknowledge and thank you all, because I think to the co-op's program, we do think we can do it all sometimes, and asking for help is one of the things that many of us, many of us need to work on often. So appreciate that we find ways to give back, we find ways to make sure that girls and boys are able to attend school, participate in sports, that we can find community within our own communities, and that we can just be inspiring to each other and mentor. And it's one of those things that really allows us to grow and be better as a community, no matter your gender. So I want to acknowledge and thank you all for being here. And with that, we're going to look to Mr. Dominique to tell us how we're doing this. Okay. Well, thank you all, and as a reminder, there is no obligation that you stay for the remaining of the meeting, so thank you for what you do. That brings us back to the item that we pulled off the consent agenda. Councilmember Kruever, are you willing to provide a motion? It's on page four. It's a proposal number R2025-111.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to move the proposal R2025-111.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt proposal R2025-111. Can the court please read?
Proposal number R2025-111, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the reappointment of eight existing members to the Pierce County Birth to 25 Advisory Board.
Thank you. And joining us on Zoom, we have Mary Neff, Kate Ginn, and Sharon Hannick. I think that's it. If any of the three of you would like to introduce yourselves and tell us why you want to continue serving, Mary, you were here first, so we could go to you.
Thank you, Jenny. I'm Mary Neff, and I've had the privilege of serving Pierce County for the last couple of years. I've learned a lot through it. I feel like it is definitely value-add to our community. I'm passionate about working with kids and families and making Pierce County a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to continue serving. Kate?
Good afternoon, Chair Hitchen and members of the council. I'm Kate Ginn.
I'm Kate Gin. My role on the Birth to 25 Advisory Board is for District Four. I'm a parent of two kiddos in the Hilltop neighborhood, and I also serve as the Deputy Director of First Five Fundamentals. So, I've been happy to participate in FEED 25 and also on the Policy Subcommittee for making recommendations to you all. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Sharon?
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity just to do another term with the Birth to 25 Commission. I was on there from the very beginning. And I represent the first district. I particularly like the way it was set up because we have some people that are from various different groups that work directly with children, work around children, but you also have the seven members. And I thank the council members for appointing us. We represent just the various business communities and parents, so that it adds a new, a good dimension of just, I'm going to say, the average folk, the average parent, someone who might be just working in the business world, but not necessarily in an education situation. And yet, so many of the decisions affect all families around Pierce County. So, thank you for that and that decision to be bringing in the large members from each council district. And I look forward to serving another term. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Do any of my colleagues have questions for any of our appointees? Well, seeing none, this is a public hearing on proposal R 2025-111. There are no member, well, does anyone in chambers wish to provide public comment? Seeing none, we will go online. Mr. Weinsberry?
Yes, Madam Chair. For any members of the public who wish to provide comments on proposal number R 2025-111, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Madam Chair.
With no hands raised, we'll close public comment and bring it back before my colleagues here. Councilmember Kruever with comments.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say I was very privileged to be able to sponsor this. These women work very hard. This is not an easy committee. And I'll say they are all dedicated and very true to the work and very enthusiastic about it. And I'm very grateful that they stepped up to do this. So, it's not easy. So, thank you. Thank you for your volunteerism. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I will extend my thanks as well. And while, I just want to be clear, it is Women's History Month, but Birth to 25, there are both men and women on the Birth to 25 Advisory Board. We just happen to be appointing eight of the women who have been serving, so, or reappoint. So, thank you for the work that you do. The motion before us is to adopt Resolution 2025-111. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Yanbe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ayala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever?
Aye.
Councilmember Morrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your work and look forward to the next Birth to 25 meeting. That brings us to Section 8, which is Resolutions. Before us today, we have Resolution 2025-107. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2025-107 for approval.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2025-107. Can the clerk please read?
Proposal number R 2025-107, a resolution of the Pierce County Council setting the date of an evening District Number Seven council meeting for Monday, June 2, 2025, at 5:30 PM at Nichols Community Center, 690 Ninth Avenue, Fox Island, Washington.
Thank you. Ms. Long, to introduce.
Thank you. So, the Pierce County Charter provides that the councils shall hold an evening meeting in each of the seven council districts every year, and the council's rules of procedure provide that the specific time, place, and dates of these evening meetings be set by resolution. The resolution before you today, R 2025-107, sets the evening District Seven meeting. Details as provided by the clerk and in the title. And I would just note that the June 2 evening meeting is also in addition to your regular 3 PM Tuesday, June 3 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Denson, any comments on your item?
Well, thank you for everyone's consideration. We're planning this pretty far out because we're doing it in collaboration with Planning and Public Works. The main topic of conversation, no surprise, is going to be the Fox Island Bridge. This is a huge project for District Seven and a huge project for Pierce County. So, we're finally getting to the point where we've got some alternatives that we can discuss with the community, hear more from the community. And you'll have a chance to drive right over that bridge on your way to the meeting. So, you can, you can check it out and come with your own ideas as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public to provide public comment on R 2025-107. Please state your name if you'd like it on the record, and you have up to three minutes. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll go online. Mr. Weinsberry?
Yes, Madam Chair. For any members of the public who wish to provide comments on proposal number R 2025-107, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And Madam Chair, it looks like we have one hand at this time, ending in phone number 874. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Hitchens and councilmembers. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to ask, I know this is to discuss the Fox Island Bridge, but that issue, it really affects a lot of people. And like you said, I think Ms. Denson said it's Pierce County's biggest project, one of their biggest projects. So, I would ask that Ms. Denson, being this is scheduled so far out in the future, that she coordinate with the City of Gig Harbor and that she hold this meeting at the Civic Center in Gig Harbor, which is a centrally located location. I think holding a council meeting on an island, that's kind of far, far off the beaten path, while it may afford an opportunity for people locally to discuss, you know, conveniently, the bridge issue, but I am pretty confident there are other constituents throughout the county, you know, District Seven, that would like to address and speak with Ms. Denson as well. And I think that would be hampered by having this meeting on an island. So, I would just ask that they, again, just coordinate that with the City of Gig Harbor, and Gig Harbor Civic Center is centrally located. And it would convey a message to all of Ms. Denson's constituents that she values and appreciates community input and support. So, thank you for allowing me to speak on this.
Thank you for your comments.
And at this time, I see no other hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, the motion before us is to approve R 2025-107. Is there any further comments? Councilmember Morrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, not that I'm going to address the question that was stated by the previous speaker, but one of the things that we like to do as council members is highlight different areas of our district, whether it be on an island or on a mountain slope. There is some unique characters to making sure that we make the rounds to all of our district. And I know that we have had a meeting in Gig Harbor, the last one we had, I wasn't able to make the one out in the middle of nowhere in Long Branch, but, you know, I think there, again, when people travel in my district, they have to go a long ways to get anywhere because I, you know, my district takes in a lot of suburban and rural areas. So, I think, you know, there again, as we as council members look at our areas that we would like to have meetings in, we try to split it up, and I think that works the best. I have had meetings in areas like the town of Wilkerson that hasn't ever had a council meeting before, in that I can remember. And so, I will have some unique ones coming up. I have two more years on this council. And so, I just appreciate the thought that goes into where you put these in districts because it is important to make sure that everyone is included in the discussion. And I know the Fox Island Bridge is going to be a discussion in the near future. So, I just want to know what the refreshments are going to be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Denson?
Refreshments are going to be an exciting surprise. I'm not sure we've gotten to thinking about that, but it will, it will be wonderful, I'm sure. And yes, thank you. I completely agree, Councilmember Morrell. And I know that, I think, similar to other council members, I try to move things around the district. All of our districts are enormous. I mean, if you look at the Pierce County Council, if you Google that and look at all of our districts, they're, they're quite diverse typically and quite large. So, in my district, for example, this year, we're going to have it on Fox Island. Last year, we had it here in the city of Tacoma at Point Defiance Park at the Science and Math Institute Environmental Center. The year before that, we had it way the heck out on Long Branch at the tip of the Key Peninsula. And thank you to everyone who made the effort to attend that meeting, which I think was everyone except for Councilmember Morrell. And then the year before that, you're correct, was at the city of Gig Harbor, which does have a lovely, lovely chambers in it as well. And I'm sure we'll circle back again, but we try to get throughout because these are completely different communities. They've got completely different issues from each other, and it's great for them to be able to participate because some of the folks on an island or at the tip of the Key Peninsula have a hard time coming all the way into Tacoma to see a council meeting. Some folks don't have transportation. We don't have public transportation outside of the little city of Gig Harbor. So, it's my pleasure to invite everyone to go to them and to have them have easy access to the representatives that affect their lives every day.
Thank you for those comments, and I know it's on my calendar, so appreciate it. So, before us is R 2025-107 for approval. If the clerk could please read the roll.
Councilmember Ayala?
Aye.
Councilmember Yanbe?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Morrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion is adopted. That brings us before proposal O 2025-500. Can the clerk please read? Oh, wait, nope. Councilmember Kruever for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move for adoption, O 2025-500.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt O 2025-500. Now, if the clerk could please read.
Proposal number O 2025-500, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council granting a supplemental franchise number one to the OHOP Mutual Light Company for location of power lines on Cernan County-owned rights of way and authorizing the executive to execute said franchise.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson to brief the council.
Thank you, Chair Hitchens. Before you this afternoon is proposed ordinance number O 2025-500, which would authorize the executive to execute a supplemental franchise agreement with the OHOP Mutual Light Company. The OHOP Mutual Light Company provides power service in portions of unincorporated Pierce County in District Three. In February of 2022, this body approved ordinance 2021-126, which granted OHOP Mutual their current 15-year power line franchise, which allows for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a power line system in the county's rights of way. The map's on page 92 of your packet, I believe. I know a new packet went out, so that may have shuffled one page or not, but I believe it's page 92 of your packet, shows the, the current franchise area in blue, and then the proposed supplemental area are the areas that are being added in red. The county engineer reviewed this application and does recommend granting the franchise. Both a fiscal and equity analysis had been completed and are included in your packet. A public hearing was held at the Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee on February 11th, where the first proposal did receive a due pass, was forwarded with a due pass recommendation. The $2,500 application fee has been paid by the applicant. And with that, Madam Chair, both council staff and Mr. Oniski from Planning and Public Works are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. Mr. Oniski, anything to add?
Good afternoon. I don't have anything else to add. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public to provide comments on O 2025-500. Please state your name if you'd like it on the record and keep your remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to address the council on this proposal? Seeing none, we'll go online.
Yes, Madam Chair. For any members of the public who wish to provide comments on proposal number O 2025-500, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Madam Chair.
Seeing no hands raised, we'll close public comment on this ordinance and bring it back to the full council. Any remarks? Councilmember Kruever?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to compliment OHOP. I happen to be served by OHOP, and they are just, they just rock. And I'm excited to see how they get to expand, and other people will have the pleasure of being serviced by OHOP. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion before us is to adopt O 2025-500. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kruever?
Aye.
Councilmember Morrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ayala?
Aye.
Councilmember Yanbe?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
With seven ayes and zero nays, the motion is adopted. That brings us to Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on a topic of significance that is affecting or important to Pierce County or the government here that did not appear on our agenda for final action. There is a three-minute limit, and we ask that you please state your name if you'd like it on the record, and you are to address all comments to the chair. And we'll start in chambers. If anyone would like to address the council in chambers, please come to the podium, and the timer will be over here.
I'm Lori Lee Littman. I'm a veteran, 100% service-connected veteran, and the situation going on with the VA might affect Pierce County businesses as well because the medical providers in Pierce County that are contracted with the American League VA are not being paid from this administration. So, they're canceling contracts, which is making veterans lose their care. And also, some of these contractors are going after us veterans for payment, using our social security numbers and information. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's not looking good. There's a lot of, a lot of care being cut off from us. So, just, I just wanted to make you aware because it's affecting the businesses in Pierce County as well because they're not getting paid for seeing us. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and speak with us, and we will go online.
Yes, Madam Chair. For any members of the public who wish to provide comments, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. Madam Chair, it looks like we have two hands at this time. The first hand is Dewey. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
Looking there?
We are.
Oh, hey, how you guys doing? Hey, I was just, wanted to thank Amy and Dave for speaking up about the IY inspections last week. I was kind of hoping the people on the Department of Health Committee would have spoken up and let me know why it's taken so long for it to get up and running. All the Department of Health has been doing is making excuses, misleading people, giving us misinformation, flat-out lies. And all this is a form of manipulation. 2021, a person on Facebook tried to get this up and running. Robin and Amy have been working on this for the last two years, and it's been 25 years since Washington State approved it. All they've been saying is they've been looking into a feasibility of it, which doesn't make sense since all, all you have to do is watch a video that's already made by the Washington State Department of Health, go inspect it in your computer system, and you're done. So, I don't know why this would take so long, especially since none of the counties have been doing it in some as long as 15 years. Jeremy Simmons at the Washington State Department of Health said the video is highly accurate in, for people to inspect their gravity or pressurized system. So, why not us? When I talked to Robin, she said that the Department of Health Committee had some control over whether we had this or not. So, as far as... whether we had this or not. So, as far as all I've heard from Robin was, so far, all I've heard from was Robin, Amy, and Dave. Janie said this was a priority, but once again, if it's a priority, it shouldn't be taking this long to get up and running. Once again, all this does is help the less fortunate, like senior citizens, veterans, people with disabilities, retirees on supplemental income, and all the low-income out there. But as things get even more expensive, and all this does is create more low-income and homeless people. So, if it's this easy as watching a video that the State Department put out three years ago, maybe some of you that are on the Department of Health Committee can say something about why it's taken so long and if you're for it or not. I think this would help people understand what you think about it. And since we can't vote for the people in the Health Department or on the Department Health Committee, people should know. That way, when it comes to time to vote for people in the county council, people can know where you stand on things. Since county councils are the only people who we can vote on to represent us, the taxpayers, so Janie, Paul, Brian, let's hear what you have to say about it and why it's taken so long and why can't it be in 2025? I mean, it just seems that simple. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have phone number ending in 874. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
Yes, Chair Hitchens, this is Thomas Wick again out in Gig Harbor. I am asking the council, after you consult with Ms. Long, your attorney, to go into executive session under RCW 42.30.110 (1) (A), (I), (I). And have a discussion on my behalf, but it's also on behalf of other Pierce County residents as well. And the specific issue is a duty to warn, and there is an RCW associated with that. Again, Ms. Long is probably well-versed on that. So, I just learned very recently that, from Axon, which is the company that maintains the police body camera recordings up in the clouds, that there's a thing called an audit trail log for each and every recording. I was not made aware of this, even though I made a request to public records three days after the incident on October 5, 2022, for a copy of any and all records associated with that incident. And again, I just learned about it. And I also, as you guys know, I was informed by the Attorney General's Office that the Pierce County Sheriff's Department is subordinate to the Pierce County Sheriff's Department. So, I was asking again for the council to go into executive session and see if they can assist me in acquiring copies of those audit trail logs. And my efforts to, they've cut off all communications with me. I was told they had to preserve their unfalsified, unedited, unredacted recordings for three years or longer. Then I was told they were auto-deleted one year after the incident, and per Axon, they were not auto-deleted. Somebody in the Sheriff's Department with access and authority had to access those records to delete them. And these audit trail logs will tell me who did what and when to those recordings. And my life depends on it. Somebody wanted me dead. I need to know who. And I think this does warrant the council's action. And I ask you, please have a discussion with Ms. Long and Sheriff's Department leadership, and please do what you can. And the last thing I wanted to ask, this is a question from Ms. Denson. I don't think she'll answer, but Dewey, the gentleman about the septic system inspections, you provided him a very detailed and lengthy response during the last Pierce County council meeting. And I have never had you respond or give any input regarding multiple issues I've been facing, and you are my representative. Best permit 761519 was rendered invalid, and Pierce County did that on their own, and they kept the money I paid for that permit and the associated permit. That is best. Recorded documents just up and disappeared. Auditor's office can't find them, can't provide them.
Mr. Wick, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
And on Zoom, it looks like we have one more hand. Madam Chair, first name is Andre Lynn. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Angela Nieschero. And you did get it right. Thank you. I'm here to talk to you today about holding a police officer accountable. I don't have a specific RCW to refer to. I just wanted to bring up this issue, or a series of issues, that I believe should exist and be corrected sooner than as good as possible. I do believe that they do have to do their jobs. And what I mean by their, I'm specifically talking to the two local precincts in my city of Puyallup, and that is the Pierce County Sheriff's Office, and then also the Puyallup Police Department, PPD. So, I have an acoustic poem with a sad, sarcastic tone, and which brings up how they are handling, or so-called handling, issues at the moment. There's drastic, illegal, reluctant training yonder, capturing opposite people syndrome. I say that because they tend to go for more innocent people rather than trying to stop crimes and actually follow through with the cases. So, of course, there's also them exhibiting unprofessionalism with biased and hateful manners. I hate in terms of sexism and as well as racism. I've experienced it myself, and I've also seen it countless times in other areas as well. There's also been refusal of filing police reports for crimes committed, even though 911 was called. There's been lying as well as falsified traffic infections going on fishing expeditions. Very expensive to try and solve those. And then also refusal to answering phones or even getting back to answering voicemail messages. So, with that, there's also receiving records as a previous member rose, brought up that issue that he was having specifically for himself. I've been having that issue as well. Luckily, it took me seven months before receiving a copy from PPD of my case. So, I'm here to ask you to request an order at the precincts, either Sheriff's or PPD or both, day and night time, and then also to have a complaint process for specific officers. I think that this would help keep the department in check, and all around will be okay. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm going to bring public comment back in chambers. We had somebody arrive after we'd already finished in chambers. Remember, you have three minutes, and address all comments to the chair.
Thank you. Ken Paulson, I have a short story. My wife got a jury card last, couple of weeks ago. Anyway, the last day was Tuesday, so I went to the jury office. And I said, hey, I brought the book, but this is my daughter. Her stalker murdered her. He was in court in this building, and the judge recognized that this person, after he hit the hammer, and he said he was pointing in the courtroom, I want you to talk to him. I don't know who you was, but it was somebody who knew something. They wrote up a report that said, hey, this guy needs a mental evaluation. Okay, it didn't happen. The person handling the case obviously didn't know that nine months earlier, in Ellensburg, another judge had said the guy was in the court because he had an incident, some fight about a girl. And he said, ordered that guy, the person who murdered my daughter, to see a counselor/mental health person once a week in eastern Washington, and that person to send a report every week to the criminal system in Ellensburg. Apparently, the prosecutor didn't know that because they would have, like, done something instead of basically nothing. That information may not have been totally public before, but I decided to say it today. And so, tomorrow's 15 years since she was murdered. And there is now a Jennifer Paulson stranger stalking order that 5,000 to 5,500 people have obtained in Washington State that gives the judges a smorgasbord of things to order. They still have to order it, but they can get a bracelet on the person, and the victim can have a phone app to know where the person is, and they can order a mental evaluation. And there might be a couple more things that they could do, but they need to do it. And some people have the thinking that...
Mr. Paulson, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council this afternoon? Okay. Are there any, is there any other business from any of my colleagues? Councilmember Kruber?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that I spent quite a bit of time last week watching septic videos. Probably learned more than I cared to know, but they really did seem rather basic. And so, I just want to say I look forward to the opportunity when we can have some more dialogue and information about what obstacles are and how we can overcome that to get a DIY system set up. It'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember or Vice Chair Herrera?
Thank you. Just wanted to mention that this Friday, it's going to be the Chief Lesai Honor Walk hosted by the Nisqually Tribe and many other folks. Everybody's invited to that. It's at the place where Chief Lesai was hung, which is at the plaza right across from Fort Silicon Park. Folks are going to march along the street and end at Silicon Park in Lakewood. And I've done this one time before, and it's just a healing for local tribes and also something to be proud of, of what Lesai represents to all the Medicine Creek tribes, which is four of them here. And so, it's really interesting to see some of the family descendants talking about it and being at the place where this all started. So, the Chief Lesai Honor Walk this weekend, Friday. Thank you.
Start time noon? Thank you. Okay. Any other business? Is there anything else before us this afternoon? Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council, we adjourn.